Hey Chris.
Evening, Robin.
Hi, Robin. How was your trip?
It was great, Mona.
Good, excellent. Yeah. Did you stop at some unusual places on the way?
Yeah, I'll, I'll come in one day and tell you. Oh, well, I'll see you on Monday.
No, actually, I'm on vacation next week, so you won't see me, but on Tuesday, Tuesday is the meeting, the tenth. Yes. Did you do any driving or Greg wouldn't let you?
Oh, he doesn't like my driving.
Well, you know, that's all right. You could relax and enjoy the sights that way.
Right, that's what I did.
Good, good.
But the trip was a great success?
It was, it was.
Right.
Are you, is your backside and or back sore from just sitting in a car all that time?
No, because we didn't really, you know, we, we drove, we stopped. Like, we stopped at some national parks along the way. We stopped at Indiana Dunes Park and walked along the beach and we stopped at the Botanical Gardens in Buffalo. So we had these stops along the way, so we never, you know, we got out, we hiked, we walked, so.
Oh, that was smart.
Yeah.
Was that your contribution or did Greg plan the whole thing?
Chat G P T planned the whole trip.
No.
Yeah.
All right, you, you've just left the boomer generation. You're now a millennial, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was unbelievable. Like, I told it how much we wanted to drive. I said we had a dog. We were looking for places to stop and that's what we did.
Well.
There was only one, like, one suggestion, but I'm not sure there was anything we could do because on the way back, we had to stop somewhere in Ohio. And they suggested.
Skipping Ohio?
No. Oh, God. They suggested Toledo and I was looking at things and they said, you know, Cleveland's a vibrant city, so we stopped in Cleveland. We just couldn't wait to get out of Cleveland.
Um, I'm shaking my head a little bit because Theo went to school at Oberlin and.
So I should have asked you.
It, that's why I'm like, wow, um, I just remember that there were like no decent hotels to stay unless you went all the way back into Cleveland.
Right, and we were right in Cleveland and even, you know, Cleveland, we stayed in a nice hotel, but there's, like, it's really congested. I mean, it's a small city and it's super congested. And there's, I think we're spoilt in Boston because there's a bunch of green space in Boston. And New York City, there's nothing, nothing. I saw this guy walking a dog and I asked him, I said, is there any green space around here? And he said, not really.
It's a tough industrial city is what it comes down to.
And I don't know if Toledo would have been any better. I, I don't know.
I'm not sure I've ever been to Toledo, so I can't comment. If I, if I have, it was not memorable.
Yeah, but you know, on the way there, we stopped in Ann Arbor, which is just like perfect.
That is a place I really want to go to. I want to see a Michigan football game.
Yeah, it was amazing. I, I actually got, Carol Lisbon sent me on a mission to buy her a Michigan T-shirt because she went to Michigan. So she needed a new T-shirt. So I go into the, the store and I, I had to call her. I was overwhelmed. I was like, do you want one with an M? Do you want one that says the University of Michigan? What color do you want? I, I'm like, you didn't give me hardly enough information to make this purchase for you.
Well, well, don't, don't tell Chief Incy that I, I really want to see a Michigan game.
Yeah.
Although I'll, I'll watch his son play there. That would be the best ever.
Right, right, right. Yeah, it's supposed to be an amazing studio. They, they also have a really phenomenal arboretum. We went walking in there. It was spectacular, so. All right, well, I guess I'll start the meeting.
I'm going to challenge you, Robin. You have the opportunity to have the fastest selectmen's meeting.
I'll take you up on that. All right.
All right, Cam, what do you think? Will you hold her to it?
No more chit chats. Well, good evening. To the Dover Board of Selectmen Thursday, July tenth meeting. Our meeting is being held remotely via Zoom. As always, we are using the, 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 um, Zoom webinar technology, so we do a public comment at the beginning of the meeting and if you wish to participate or make a comment, you would need to use the raise your hand feature. But before we go to the first item of business, I would like to take a roll call vote of the members of the Board of Selectmen that are present this evening. I, Robin Hunter, present.
Dave Haviland, present.
Cam Hudson, present.
And now we will move to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? I don't see any.
I don't see, we don't have any attendees right now, so just, we're all looking at each other.
We're safe.
All right. So the first item of business on the agenda will be presented by Mike Blanchard. And that is going to be a discussion regarding the intermunicipal grant reimbursement agreement between the town of Needham and the town of Dover for fiscal year 2026. And to vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement. And just as a reminder, this is the agreement for the public health nurse that we share with Needham. So I turn it over to you, Mike.
Thanks, Robin. So just very quickly, um, you may be experiencing deja vu. You just did this for F Y twenty five. Um, so this is a identical agreement with the up, the, the date updated for F Y twenty six. Um, so we were, we were a little behind with Needham, uh, getting last year's done. We're ahead of the game now. Um, so I just would recommend and ask your approval of the agreement, um, so that we can get reimbursed for our, uh, the public health portion of the public health nurse position.
Are there any questions regarding this intermunicipal agreement? Okay, then I move to approve the intermunicipal grant reimbursement agreement between the town of Needham and the town of Dover for fiscal year 2026, and I authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement.
Second.
All in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
I, Cam Hudson.
Excellent. So moving right along, we are going to move to item one point two on the agenda. And that item, my, I'm not, see, I'm going to slow us down because my bookmarks aren't working. Ah, there, oh, all right. And again, this is Michael Blanchard and this is to approve the statement of work agreement between Clifton Larson Allen, L L P, C L A and the town of Dover for professional financial services. And if this name rings a bell, it should. Last year, we used Clifton Larson Allen to help us with the fiscal year close. And that was a really good experience. Unfortunately, we are still in the process of, um, digging ourselves out from a little hole that we had due to, um, you know, due to changes in staffing, and so we need them again this, this year. And so I'm going to turn it over to, to Mike to give us a little more detail on this agreement.
Great, thank you. And I don't have much more to add. I think you covered it, um, you know, but as you said, this is another deja vu, but from a year ago, a very similar agreement. Um, you know, as you mentioned, uh, C L A has been in here for a few years. Um, they know us well, uh, which allows them to work very effectively, um, to get our books closed. Uh, as you mentioned, we're very eager to get them closed. We continue to move forward on our improvement and, um, our timing of our audits. So again, I recommend your approval of, of this agreement.
Right, and, and I think, Mike, it would be good to mention that you did talk to Jared, who is actually, we're outsourcing our accounting from. And, you know, we've been really pleased with the work that he's done. I, I believe that's the case, right, Chris? And Chris approached him and he actually felt that C L A was better suited to provide us with these services.
Yeah, I, I concur. Um, Jared's, he's, you know, he's doing a great job, um, but, uh, you know, we have more than just an accounting, accountant vacancy in the office. Um, so, um, C L A comes in, they, they, like Mike said, they know us well. Um, and they really help us, um, get over the hump with some of these, uh, you know, busier times, larger projects that are, uh, you know, crucial to the budget cycle. So we're happy to have them on board again.
Right, and I think for people that aren't familiar with this, there's a lot of prep work that you have to do before your auditors come in. And, you know, we're required to have an audit and we want that to be efficient and they'll prepare all the work papers that are necessary. And having helped us last year, they are already aware of our systems, which I think will just make it really efficient, so.
And, and with any luck, uh, if we, uh, resolve all the staffing issues, come up to full speed or full team, whatever the right words are.
Right.
Uh, and this should be the last year that we will need them to do this catch up.
Right.
Um, is, is that a fair statement? I'll, I'll say, Chris or Mike?
Yeah, I think it's, it's relatively fair. I think, um, you know, that they've been doing a, a good portion of the, the closing work. Uh, we're definitely going to be, I think, better positioned next year to have, um, one identified what we need to do in advance. And, uh, just be in a little, uh, better position, um, to hopefully, uh, I don't want to say we don't need them at all, but definitely, uh,
It's, it's the goal.
Not as much service, but that is what we will strive for.
I like Robin's word. It's the goal is to, is to have them catch us up and we set them free. The exact timing of that is, uh, not known at this time, but we are making progress, uh, thanks to them, so.
And thanks to the team. I mean, you know, Chris and Mike have really done a lot in a, in the last few months to really get us back on track. And I mean, and that was evident with us getting back the triple A rating. And I think, you know, the momentum is great and this will just help us get the books closed earlier and faster and we'll just keep building on that progress. So I move to approve the statement of work agreement between Clifton Larson Allen, L L P and the town of Dover for professional services dated June twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
I, Cam Hudson.
Excellent. Oh, Mike, there's so much for you this evening. The next item of business, one point three, this, I can tell it's the beginning of the year. It's like, beautiful of all these contracts. To approve the Wooded and Current Proposal Proposal for Professional Services to assist the town of Dover with compliance related to U S E P A Municipal Sep- Separate Storm Sewer System, M S four. General permit required for permit year eight. That was a mouthful. I might have to turn it over to you to explain. I know this has something to do with the storm order system and it's all yours.
Yeah, uh, so, so as Robin mentioned, this is something you see each year. Um, I, I know I won't get this all right, but the M S four permit is part of a national uh, requirement through E P A. It's also administered locally by a mass D E P. It's called Nifty's. Um, I'm going to try to look that up. It's something about pollutant discharge, something. But the point is, uh, we are required, uh, to participate, uh, to meet certain standards. Um, and Warden Incarnate has done that for the last couple of years. Uh, we previously had a different provider. Um, we brought Warden Incarnate to improve our plan and they've done that. Um, so we're looking to continue with them for the, for the next year. Um, and to Dave's, uh, earlier question, um, you know, while this, uh, service will not be, I, I don't envision it being eliminated. Um, we do hope it to be reduced, uh, as we are in the middle of recruiting a full-time town engineer position. So they will be able to take on some of the duties that are now completely outsourced. Um, so we look forward to that once we have that person on board.
Are there any additional questions regarding this contract?
Uh, we're talking about year eight, Mike. Is there a, uh, uh, goal deadline? Is it year nine, year ten, twenty seven?
So that's a great question. So, so I don't, I don't think there's an end date. I think it's continuous under the, the, um, the program. I believe they're issued in five-year increments. We, I think we're in our second five-year permit.
So that's fine, that's enough. There, there are five years we're going to go in year eight, so.
Right, right.
All right. So I moved to approve the Master Professional Services Agreement and the Scope of Service dated July second, twenty twenty five between Wooded and Current Inc. and the town of Dover, Mass. for professional engineering services related to M S four general permit requirements for permit year eight.
Second.
All in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
I, Cam Hudson.
Excellent. Oh, Mike, another bid. So this is item one point four on the agenda and this is, and we do this annually at our July meeting. And this is to award the bid for tree remo- removal services. And I know we always do an R F P and it looks like this year Stumpy's Tree Services of Ashland, who I believe we have used before is the lowest bidder, right?
That, that's right. Yep. So, so you covered it pretty straightforward. Uh, they were the lowest responsive bidder. Uh, under mass procurement, therefore they get to, uh, we, you are required to award the contract to them.
Right. And, and, and I know because I love the name and I know.
I had, I had them remove twenty-five trees from around our house and it was an impressive, uh, operation.
Yeah.
Where they took the trees right over the top of the house. It was crazy.
Right, right. So I move to award the Tree Removal Services bid to Stumpy's Tree Services of Ashland, Massachusetts.
Second.
All in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
I, Cam Hudson.
Okay. The next, oh, this never ends. The next item, one point five, is the vote to declare the Dover Police Department T A I T Communications Base Station as surplus items. And this is just when we retire equipment, we have to declare it as surplus material so that we can then actually either sell it or dispose of it. So I'm going to return, I'm going to turn this over to Mike, but I think that's what we're doing with the, uh, retired communication system because we replaced it with a new one.
That's right. Yep. So I, and I apologize. I actually meant to include a copy of the policy, but you, you hit it on the head. Um, the, so there's a selectman policy that, um, in order to dispose of items, either, um, with value or without, um, the, the selectman vote to, to declare them surplus. Uh, Chief Incy's requested, uh, we have two, um, repeater units as part of a radio system. Um, these are actually, uh, new. They haven't been used, so we're, we're very hopeful that there's some value there. Um, the chief has, uh, created an account on a municipal bidding website, uh, kind of like a municipal eBay. Um, and with your approval, uh, should you approve it, uh, he, he's plans to place those on that site. Um, and we believe, uh, uh, could have a value as much as five thousand dollars each. Um, I appreciate the chief moving quickly on this, you know, as with all electronics, you know, as new additions come out, longer you wait, they lose value. So, um, we wanted to get this out there as soon as possible. So, um, I recommend your approval and then again, following your approval, uh, the, the chief will prepare these and hopefully auction these off. Um, the money that will come in would then go to the general fund, um, and, you know, become free cash in the future.
So I am hopeful that the, um, the, um, oh, God, what, what is the word I'm looking for? That the estimated proceeds will come close to that amount.
Yeah.
So if there are no other questions, I'm going to move to do to, is it TAIT or T A I T?
So that's a great question. So we'll, we'll go with T A I T. I think that's.
All right.
The default for that.
I move to, to deem to T A I T Communication Base Stations as surplus items.
Second.
All in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
I, Cam Hudson.
Okay.
Now it's your turn, Robin.
Now it's my turn. So another thing that we usually do this, this time of year is we spend a lot of time either reappointing people to, to committees where their terms have expired or when people have resigned. We've gotten recommendations from those committees for individuals that would are interested in filling those terms. So this evening, we have reappointments in two committees. The first one is the Open Space Committee and it is a request from the Open Space Committee to re- reappoint Richard Nagy and Chris Kahoon, both for one-year terms effective July first, twenty twenty-five through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And then we have similar reappointments for the Board of Appeals, which sometimes we call the Z B A, but it's really the Board of Appeals in Dover. And that's to reappoint Nadir Ahmed for a three-year term effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And then to reappoint Nancy Green and Michael Donovan as associate members, both for one-year terms effective July first, twenty twenty-five through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So, you know, I thank all, part of all these members for, for offering to to be reappointed. You know, they have all contributed in the past significantly to these committees. And I hope, and I expect that they will continue to to, to, to provide value. So I move to appoint and reappoint all individuals to the town's boards and committees and staff members as presented. Well, there are no staff members this time, so.
I will second it, but it's Greg Kahoon and the one-year terms for Nancy Green and Michael Donovan and June thirtieth, not July thirtieth.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
No, for, you just, uh, that's why I read them and, but anyway, second.
Um, all in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
I, Cam Hudson.
And then item one point seven and it's Mike and Chris. Oh. Um, so they're going to discuss the year-end budget appropriation process and transferring of funds to, from, from one account to another. And these types of transfers must be approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Warren Committee. And just as a reminder to citizens, if they're listening to this meeting, um, when you budget from for a municipality, you're actually appropriating cash to each of those budget line items. And you can move cash from budget items that are under budget to budget items that are over budget, but in order to do that, you need a recommendation of the Warren Committee and the approval of the Board of Selectmen. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Chris and Mike.
Yeah, absolutely. So just to fill in a little, a little gap, the, the reason why, um, uh, we need to, to do these transfers is um, every year when we approve, uh, a budget for the next fiscal year, it's, it's kind of like a snapshot of what we intend to do financially um, for the next fiscal year. Um, but as time goes on and we execute that budget, uh, things don't always go exactly how we planned them. Um, and in some cases, there's a need for, uh, or higher demand for certain line items and services related to the line items. Um, or things happen that, uh, we need to address and have a, a financial impact, uh, on the town. So that's just a little precursor as to why, um, we need to do some of these transfers. And I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully everybody can see that.
Yep.
Um, I'm just going to briefly, uh, walk through each one of the transfers. I'll try to be as brief as possible. And if anybody has any questions, um, or.
Because of the challenge that Mr. Haviland has made?
Well, I think it, we can stop after each transfer and, um, I, I have an answer. So, um, yeah, so the first one up is a, a Parks and Rec transfer. It's for five thousand dollars. Um, there is a deficit in the vehicle maintenance line for, for, for this particular budget. They have a ten-year-old tractor, um, that just required more maintenance than anticipated, uh, this year, probably due to age. Um, and they had a surplus in their over, uh, overtime line. Um, they just had some staffing changes, new staff member in the office this year and they, um, just didn't need as much O T. So, um, it's, uh, Parks and Rec overtime to vehicle maintenance to cover the tractor. I'm just going to keep going unless, uh, somebody stops me, so.
Okay.
So the next one up is, um, for planning salaries. Um, there was a deficit created, um, due to some e- expenses related to a staff departure, uh, in this particular office this year. And, um, they had a surplus in their planning professional services. Um, I, I just don't think they used as much, uh, the professional services they anticipated. So this transfer for twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, seventeen cents. Um, it's going from that professional services surplus to the salary deficit. Next up, um, this is actually topical. It relates to the, uh, intermunicipal agreement, um, for the shared public health nurse. As Mike alluded to, uh, we were a little bit behind schedule with getting the agreement, um, in place and everything set up um, for F Y twenty-five and, uh, our public health nurse started in Dover during this fiscal year and we paid her salaries, uh, for now, salaries. Um, and the reimbursements, um, from the town of Needham as part of the, uh, agreement for F Y twenty-five. So that's the reason why there is this twenty-five thousand dollar, um, almost twenty-six thousand dollar deficit. And, um, it's being funded still within the Board of Health Department. Um, again, it's a professional services line. They did not use as much professional services this year as anticipated. And that is where the funding source is coming from, um, to cover this deficit. In the future, uh, we have a grant account established, um, for the shared services, uh, with Needham and that will be used, uh, going forward to help fund this position. Will be reimbursed for our, our expenses related to the commission. Next up, this one's pretty, a pretty, uh, small one, but it's two hundred and fifty dollars. This is related to the Historical Commission in a professional services line. This is a very uh, small budget item, which does not give them a lot of capacity to do a lot every year. Um, they held a training towards the end of the year. Um, and unfortunately, that, that training just went over budget just a little bit. Um, and we're suggesting funding this from the health insurance premium line item, which has, uh, a large surplus this year. Um, and that's the, the reason for that is that they don't have, uh, any other funds available within this budget. Next up, and these ones, we start getting into, um, some of the larger deficits and more impactful, uh, things that happened this year, so. Uh, just as a precursor, but the next transfer is for ninety-three thousand, five hundred. And it is, um, for the deficit in the data processing or I T uh, services line item within our budget. And this is related to, it's kind of a couple of compounding factors. The first is, as everyone knows here, for the public's benefit, we rely completely on an outsourced third-party I T provider to run our to run our network infrastructure, uh our, you know, I T hardware. Um, and also service uh to our employees uh that need help I T ba- uh on a day-to-day. So there's that, and we also uh rely on them to help us complete I T-related projects. And this year, we had a pretty significant municipal fiber project that was implemented in town, which was funded itself by, at least partially by a grant, but not all of the work uh that was needed to complete that project was covered by the grant. And we again had to tap our I T provider to help facilitate um the implementation of that project at the townhouse. So that is all um.
Chris, could you elaborate a little bit on what that fu- fiber project entailed?
Sure. And uh, Mike, I might ask you to help me uh fill in some of the the nitty-gritty details about that.
Um. I don't really need the nitty-gritty, just a broad overview.
Sure. Chris, if you want me to do a quick, so Cam, right now, um every municipal building has a uh its own private uh internet connection. So we all have like a Comcast or Verizon account. Uh, not very secure because we communicate and access servers over that line. What we've done is installed a municipal fiber ring or network. So all the buildings are now connected by a private cable that we own and only have access to. Um, we will now have one point of entry into our network, which is here at the townhouse. And then the fiber from here runs to all of the municipal buildings. So we'll have better game, network and internet speed, but most importantly, better uh network security as well.
Right, excellent. Does that cover the library as well, Mike, or?
It does, yes, yep. It covers all all municipal buildings. Uh, to Chris's point, uh we did receive a grid that paid for the fiber and the installation of the fiber itself. Um, and and the additional costs related to other other related work we had to do.
Okay, thank you.
So of the ninety-three thousand, how much of that was related to the fiber project versus just additional services from the I T provider? Or is that just really hard to break out?
So it's not really hard. I just don't know if we have that at our fingertips.
Okay, well, just whenever. I'm I was just curious. I'm I'm assuming a majority of this relates to the to the um fiber project.
I'm gonna guess fifty-fifty, Chris, I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, there's other um it increases kind of across the board with I T services. We did have a bunch of uh hardware that was purchased back in uh, you know, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty COVID era. Um, that's kind of at its life cycle and um also had a new, a lot of new employees start that um acquire new hardware as well, um and just network services as well are up. Um, so. Um, but again, this is uh proposed to be funded by the Health Insurance Premiums Account.
Right.
Um.
Okay, and then, and then one more question.
Yeah.
You know, based upon this experience, did we increase the budget for twenty twenty-six?
We we did.
Okay, that's what I remembered. Okay.
Yeah, I believe we're going from, I think it was a hundred ninety thousand in F Y twenty-five, and we had uh approved it in fiscal year twenty-six, two hundred and fifty-five. So.
Okay.
Alright, jump. And again, we're not expecting any big I T and protection projects, so. So moving ahead, um I'll say this before we get in the next, four transfers are all to the same account. Um, and it's the Selectmen Professional Services Account, which had a total deficit uh this year of a hun- roughly a hundred sixty thousand. Um, some of it's very easily uh explained, and it's due to uh staffing departures or vacancies in our financial offices that we we were without a full-time treasurer for a while. And also, as I alluded to, uh when we were talking about the C L A agreement, that we essentially lost our whole accounting staff. We didn't have one staff member for a period of time. Um, and because of those reasons, and in in order to keep operations running, we had to bring in uh consulting services to fulfill those roles. Um, that's what's driven most of the deficit in this account. We had to pay those professional services agreements um through our own line. Um, that's what you'll start seeing here is the first transfer is for twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents uh out of the Health Insurance Premiums Account. Um, and that's uh, this, these aren't one-to-one um dollar amounts, but this is a portion of the payment to the the treasurer, collector consultant. And also the associated cleanup work on top of the day-to-day functioning of the office um with this particular consultant. Again, this is the same reasoning for the deficit and the same line item. However, this one's being funded from Treasurer Professional Services. We tried to look at surpluses in the respective departments to help uh fund this deficit. And um, you know, we didn't end up using as much professional service in the treasurer's office. Obviously, we already had a professional service running the office. So we're just pulling the surplus from that line uh to help fund the deficit as well. Next up, again, same same deficit, same line item. Um, but this transfer is from the surplus that was generated from the staffing vacancy in the treasurer's office. So we have fifty-six thousand dollar surplus that's being transferred to uh the same deficit Selectmen Professional Service. Next one up, same reasoning, same account. This sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars is from the surplus generated from the vacancies in the accounting office. And lastly, um, this is a different account. This is the legal fees uh account. And this is a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer from the Health Insurance Premiums uh account. And the deficit uh was created in this particular line item just because we we had an increased need for legal services this year. Uh, we had a number of uh situations and um really need for legal consultation. I used this example last night with the Warrant Committee, but uh for instance, we had a forty B uh application, new forty B application uh come through our Board of Appeals this year. And we just didn't have the in-house expertise to make sure that this comprehensive permit was was handled um. You know, with the degree needed um in terms of uh compliance with the law. And we had to have a our, you know, our legal consultant come in and support the meetings and handling of that uh application process. So um, doesn't explain the whole deficit. There was other items, but just wanted to use that example to illustrate how we plug in legal services in the situations that arise. And that's the last, last transfer.
Sorry about that. I have to put mute on because there's a little dog behind me that's very noisy with these toys. So. Well, thanks, Chris. That was a very, very thorough um explanation. So I really do do appreciate that. I don't have any questions. Does anybody else?
I don't. I cheated and went to the Warrant Committee last night, so I'm on round two.
Right. Yeah, I was not back yet. So.
I wasn't done either. I was still flying from Australia.
Cam, I'm impressed with how alert you are. I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations transfers as presented.
Second.
All in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
Hi, Ken Hudson.
Alright, so now we will move to the Board of Selectmen Updates. And um, I'll begin. I I I actually do have a few, a few updates. Um, I did get my invitation to the Planning Board Meeting, which will be held on Monday night. So I should have something to report there. Um, I I also got, and I think the two of you should have been contacted by Justine as well, but there is an opportunity for a rail trail grant. Um, and I told her that I would coordinate putting her in touch with Kevin Ban and Mark Ga- Galoney. Um, and I really thanked her um for making us aware of that opportunity. So um, so I'll keep everybody posted. Um, other than that, since I missed the Warrant Committee meeting, we, I but I, it looked like it was these transfers that were the big item on that, on that meeting. Uh, we also have our second planning meeting on Tuesday, which, you know, based upon the progress we made on the first one, I would think that will most likely be the last one. We might need a third, but I'm not expecting that we do. And that will outline our goals and objectives for the year. With respect to that meeting, I was wondering if it would be okay if we started thirty minutes later? Because I have a call from one to two. So would that work with your schedules?
Yep, works with me, yes.
Okay, alright, so that would be great. I really appreciate that. And that is in person, just a reminder. It's in person at the townhouse. Um, but I'm 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 looking forward, looking forward to that meeting.
Okay, so I'm making it official and editing it to two thirty.
Thank you, alright. And those are are my, my big um, my big updates. I don't know, can you hear the noise behind me or not? No, alright, then I don't have to mute myself. He's.
Uh, with the the uh real uh progress that's been made so far is with the uh Fire Board of Engineers uh looking for a uh new chief um uh to take over. And we got a good amount of applicants and whittled that down. Uh, we've had several meetings and we're now down to five and we'll be going through um uh a much more intensive screening and interview process. Uh, we've already had an initial uh interview via Zoom. And um um I am hopeful that we've got some good candidates that uh will result in a successful search.
Excellent. So are they gonna do the similar thing like we did with the police? Do they do an assessment?
They are. That's what's next.
Okay.
So, which is good because.
It is.
A layperson like me.
Right.
What do I know about fire safety standards and implementing them? That would be zero. And I used to be a fire underwriter, but this is just, you gotta let the 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 pros be pros.
Right.
So that's really it. I mean, you know, I went to the Warrant Committee, so.
Right.
Cam, welcome back.
Yeah, I'm bereft of updates simply because they're out of the country for the last two weeks. Although um I did um as a result, miss the um Conservation Committee meeting last night. Um, so that's going to be in conflict with the Warrant Committee, so we're going to be be doing some juggling there going forward, I imagine. And um.
So it's usually the first Tuesday of every month? So they may have just changed it.
Just on on an ad hoc basis, maybe, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. In any case, I wouldn't have been here for Tuesday either. Um, and uh other than that, um I don't really have anything to report. I apologize.
It should be slow this summer, so.
How come you're smiling, Mike?
Cause he's, because he's ready for his updates. And Mike, I figured I have you update on the R F P process.
Absolutely, sure.
I think you're smiling more at the swan act he's performing, smooth and serene on the surface and battling like hell underneath.
Um, so you know, as Dave said, I I've been told it's supposed to slow down in the summer. Um, we like, we like to mentally pretend it is, but it's it's been pretty busy. Um, you know, as you just did those year-end transfers, Chris summed it up pretty quickly. Uh, but I just wanted to say thank you to Chris, to Jared, um Mona, the Warrant Committee. I mean, so much work goes on behind the scenes to to get it ready for you to make it look so easy. Um, so just really appreciate everybody's efforts. It's uh this week in particular, every year is stressful as we have to prepare these and then also open up the next year's budget as well. So um Chris is, he's doing a great job. The car, you know, he's he is the, he is a one-man show now. Um, and so it's uh it's been great.
So, so Chris, I I do have a request, and it's not urgent, but once you you're comfortable with, you know, how the fiscal year closed out, if 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 maybe you could just make a presentation and just show us, you know, how we, how we ended the year.
Yeah, absolutely. We still have uh some work to go.
Yeah, I figured as much.
Close, but um, yeah, happy to keep everybody updated and sure, I'd love to uh do a recap when it's all said and done.
That sounds great, thanks.
And then the other piece to that uh is, you know, as we catch up and get staff, we'll be doing regular reporting to the board, to the Warrant Committee. Um, so you'll have, you know, throughout the year um to to reports to review, which I think will be great.
Right, I I know we usually criticize, but I will tell you, I have heard from various departments um how much the process has improved over the last few months. You know, they are really pleased with the quality of work that Jared in is turning out. So Chris, that was really a great find. I I I mean, I just unsolicited compliments. I I've had about four or five, so.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate it. It's been really good so far.
Right.
Um, can't say everything's uh solved. We still have a long way to go, but um initial impression that, you know, we're we're doing a much better job now, um and will continue to do so. So thank you.
Well, I I also have received a few comments and and would not have mentioned it, but now that Robin's mentioned, I'm like, actually, that's true. So I I think that um what you're doing in the communication flow is improving and everyone is really appreciating it. So sometimes it's 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 good news, bad news, doesn't matter. What is the answer? That's all you want. So.
That's the goal.
Yep, keep it up.
Yes, and you see the improvement in the outcomes that we're getting, such as uh the uh recent uh return to uh to um accounting um performance. So that that's really good.
It's been great. And Jay, we'll just keep getting better, which is awesome.
Right.
Um, Monday, uh excited to just announce that our new town planner started. Uh, Melissa Tucci-Rozzi, um and I think she's gonna be a great addition. Um, I just hung up today and she's still here. Her first day, she turned on her laptop, it started smoking. Um.
Did you turn it on? It wasn't allowed in the office?
Yeah. She didn't take that as a sign to run away, so that's that's really good. We got her a new laptop, so um that that's really.
You can't. What a way.
Oh, unbelievable.
Fire chief search, why the the tech went over budget? Uh, what else?
He wanted to redecorate our office, so.
I guess so. That was it. That was it. Um, as Robin alluded to, um this past week uh was the uh responses redo for our housing study, uh R F P. Uh, and I'm pleased to report that we received three responses by the deadline. Um, so we're looking to start to review those next week. Um, and and excited that um we hopefully, hopefully have uh appropriate bids that we can pick one and move forward. So that's very exciting.
I mean, last year, we only go, the last time we went out, we got one bid because we were competing with M D, M B T A community i- issues that that communities were facing. And and the bid we got didn't really match what we were trying to accomplish. So so this is really great news. You know, hopefully, hopefully, we we have a choice.
Yep, and I I intend to use our new town planner to help review those.
Which is even better.
So it's perfect, perfect timing. Um. I guess a little theme here, the third bullet related, uh just a reminder uh to the board, or obviously the community, anybody watching. Um, the planning board continues to move forward on the M B T A Communities Process. Um, they will be before you at your July twenty-fourth meeting to give you an update. Um, it'll be a uh public hearing at the beginning of September, Monday, September eighth. And then special town meeting will be Monday, September twenty-nine. So just wanted to keep sharing those dates and sharing the information so that people have plenty of opportunities to participate. Um, but again, the mo- the mo- the next one coming up is your meeting July twenty-fourth, but we encourage people to tune in and and get more updated information.
And then there's something on August the eighteenth, right?
Uh, so I believe that is for boarding committees.
Right, that's what I think too.
You are right, that's right. Um, last, your, I think it was your last meeting, uh, you may recall, you approved the appointment of Brett Roween uh, to the police department. I just wanted to share, it's, it's always really neat for me when they come in to get sworn in. Um, just really excited he came in today, uh, got sworn in, and then started his first shift at three o'clock. Um, so I, I thought that was saying he's a Dover resident, which is great. He is the only Dover resident we have on the police department. So that's always just kind of a neat thing, um, so I was happy to, to share that. And then lastly, um, we, we, I believe we will, we'll be issuing a press release, but I just wanted to share with the board that uh, Kevin McCabe. Uh, received what's called a bottleneck grant uh, from the state uh, Mass Department of Transportation. So they have grants available for intersections that get bottlenecked uh, backed up. Um, and as I think everyone knows in Dover, we, we have significant backup at the intersection of Center, Springdale and Walpole uh, Street. So um, the grant will uh, provide um, uh, an engineering firm to look at the intersection. See what potentially we could do to redesign things, make the lights work differently. Um, all of that will be reviewed with you, the Board of Selectmen, but should changes be proposed and agreed to. It then also provides up to a half million dollars to implement uh, improvements um, that we find as well.
Wow.
Uh, appreciate Kevin working on that. I know I get stuck on that every morning. Um, some days, it's, it's, it's strange, some days there's no traffic, and some days I'm sitting there for ten plus minutes. Uh, you just never know what you're gonna find, so.
We're gonna get the Dover flyover now, that big ramp that goes right over town?
I think we should put a toll on it. It will become a toll road.
Um, and with that, that, that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thanks, Mike. And so the last item of business is the consent agenda, and it consists of the following. Approve acceptance of a one thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollar and fifty cents. U S Department of Agriculture Forest Service Volunteer Fire Capacity Grant. For a cooperative fire protection project. And then to approve twenty twenty five special one day liquor licenses for June twenty sixth. Two of those which are re- retroactive, July seventh, which is also retroactive. July eighteenth and twenty fourth, July twenty first, August twenty first, that's my dad's birthday. And September thirteenth. So I.
It's a matter of curiosity, if we oppose the retro- retroactive ones, what happens?
They have to buy us a drink.
Cam, it's not an option. I, I guess we would have to return their money as well, so I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
I, Cam Hudson.
And then the last item of business is to adjourn this meeting. So I move to adjourn the July tenth meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I don't know. See, you're pretty close to this deadline, so Cam and I can just talk for a few more minutes.
There's no filibustering here. Cam's exhausted. What's the time in Australia now, right? It's seven in the morning.
It's about, there's a, a ten hour difference, so it's um, about nine twenty in the morning now, yeah.
But is it the day before or the day after? I always get that mixed up.
Oh, I, I'm completely confused. You, you, you land in Australia and lose a day, um, um, because they're ahead of us. So it's probably Friday then, uh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then when you come back, you land in LA before you leave Australia, which is even more confusing.
Wow. Yeah, it's nine twenty one AM on Friday.
I came up with a new strategy of um, trying to a- adapt, and it, and it's worked really well. I didn't, I tried not to sleep the entire journey. And I succeeded, and I went to bed at the normal time last night and slept for eight hours, so I was really happy about that.
So I do that, but with a much, I, to me, that's the key. I mean, you have to sort of stick to your normal schedule. And it's so hard, like fourteen hours difference, I don't know, I don't know what I do.
Yep.
All right, you gotta call a vote. Yeah, I seconded, but you just gotta call a vote.
You did second it.
All in favor? I, Robin Hunter.
I, Dave Haviland.
I, Cam Hudson.
All right, so we will see you all on Tuesday at two thirty.
Uh, yeah.
Except for Mona, Mona, I hope you get really good weather.
Thank you, I hope so too. Thank you.
Well, all right, well, it's not, it's still light out. This is great.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Have a great night, everyone.
You too.
All right, goodbye.